I know.
That was the red. That's the range of the car file with Jesse.
We just watched you change it, ready for your problem. We just watched you take the initiative to change it. Who is the authority here? You?
It's like one of the... No, it's just the board.
She's a princess. Everything's gotta be covered by her. Oh, Paul, how are you doing? Haven't seen you in a while. Hey, Paul. There's a little change on the scene. At least this town, the concession booth that was saved, there's only forty pounds for the sale. It's unmarked. Here with the station. No, he's not. No, I can't see better. Senior, senior, it would be the senior citizen.
He said on that maintenance session, it would be the senior citizen.
Yeah, Dixon, senior, sir?
Yeah, well, I'd love to work with dispatch for him. Try to contact somebody tomorrow to get it fixed. In the meantime, I've got a sign on it, on the door as well.
But when I go back tomorrow and take the key back, I'll try to remember.
Yeah, it's a small state stall.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
As long as it gets reported to the right people and we get it corrected, nobody gets hurt. Well, that's why it's got big letters on it.
I would have put out of order what she wrote, broke.
That was easier. It might get their attention, too.
Someone's gonna leave a note on their system. Is that you and your pay? Yeah, overworked in the pay.
And broke.
Charles, here. Mary Timmons. Betty Childs.
Here.
Elizabeth.
Here.
Anthony York. Paul Watson. Diane Schultz. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First of all, welcome everybody that made it out. I see Mr. Linker is here. He contacted me earlier today. He's got some urgent business that he would like to address at the council hall. We're gonna be adding in to the agenda, something to be the motion to adopt. The councilman Watson's made a motion to adopt. Seconded. Seconded by councilman Timmons. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Passes? Any approval, ratified bills received?
I've got all the city board members down.
We have a motion from Councilman Schultz to print the bills. And we have seconded. Seconded by Councilman Whitten. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Passes five zero. We need to print the minutes from January fourth, two thousand sixteen.
I'm twelve. So I was here. I am seconded to deal with Diane Schultz. I wasn't here at any.
I had to obtain my book.
It's not hard to do when I'm here. I have a couple things. On number seven, with the nuisance ordinance enforcement, where do we stand on that as far as the...
We can't, right now, we're just gonna print the minutes.
And then I also wanna bring up number eight, because it says worth this part of the pay. And on that, it talks about the exit sale, and that's something completely...
Marshall, Marshall plate was on the closest. So for the stash of minutes. We have a motion to print January fourth, two thousand sixteen minutes with the corrections. We have seconded. Seconded by councilman Timmons. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Passes five zero. Before we get to unfinished business, Mr. Linker, when you're occurring, I always have to please that home.
Certainly, you don't, let me try to talk to you today. Just trying to give a jump on the other community story. What I'm bringing to you is, I'm on the C web board with the workforce and dust of work with the same river. There's a policy along with the law, starts on the same river, City Hall. They're gonna throw their, uh, folks out. What they try to do is put people back to work that's not working. People that's either drawn unemployment or someone that can't hold a project or work. They want to continue their job if it isn't working. And this lady was sort of talking to me about this, this, this black, well, talking to me about it. She was bringing it to me. Of course, I haven't been enough peanut. I was really interested at first, and she goes, "Well, this ain't costing nothing." And I said, "Come talk to us, it'll be, it's like, feel a little draft from this." She comes to our meeting last Saturday. What they're gonna do is, we're gonna hire forty people. Talking back, back to operators, heavy foot operator, truck, boot workers, on the ground for shelves, breaks. They're gonna buy chainsaw, pole saw. They're gonna bring these people in, into blast can. They're gonna clean this, they're gonna clean coves. They'll replace the coves for you. The point they cost you is the core of the drive. You don't pay the food, the fuel, you don't pay the wages, you don't pay the insurance. The liability insurance is all down. It's their employee, they're just sending them to help you out. Only thing you have, other thing you have to do is you don't have a supervisor to tell them what they're doing, what they need to keep, keep the travel, they're doing. If you had a problem, you call them. Like I say, it's, it'll be free to you. I hate to work through it, because nothing's free. But this is part of the federal program, a state program, that they hooked up and get the people back to work. And right now, while I put the data, just, I'm gonna have, councilor, I can tell you that it's fine. Doesn't matter, the Washington area, they put you in, not only take you out of your time. And what they're gonna do is put a group of six. They'll come in, they'll have a supervisor, a group of six that will work directly through supervisor. Your spree guy says, "We're gonna clean this road here, both ditches, all the way down to the conference." You whatever clarity, drive back, and they're gonna have a truck or a machine that shreds into the back of the truck. They're gonna use it, you just give them jobs, but you could ever get them to the city, you want them. We're gonna have you for two years. They're gonna employ you working for them, if you like, and if you like, it'll fit for you, you can hire them anytime, pay for it. It's just basically getting people back to work. Right now, they've got one point five, they've, um, two and a half, which would be up to four when you adopt. We, uh...
Pardon me, sir. Four million over two for the county.
For the next two years, yes. You know, that's gonna be including equipment, that they rent. It's their equipment, like I said, they rent, they rent the equipment. When they're done, they're gonna turn over to you. The pole saw, the big pole, the chainsaws, that is now supposed to be the city of work. They give you the chainsaw, they give you the pole saw. It's pretty much all set for you. Then we'll give you the trucks, we'll give you the use on that stuff. The six tank dirt, you have fourteen and seven, seven on one side. City One Eagle, which has the biggest damage from the flood. They call it, this works, can't compare it, compare it with the flood. Like I mentioned, your parts that wash, the way your parts, your coves, and, look at the other part. Basically, water ramp, the old part, they can do a part. Wherever you want to go in here, you supply in there, everything else, they do. If you're wiped out, or wrote down here, or fix a few roads somewhere in there. Build a, your total ditch, you can put the ditches, any coves you want to put in, all you, wait for the cove, the gravel, they'll do that for you. This will belong like, they will, they will, they will, they will, they will, the city is doing this so far, as a physical downpour. Only thing, uh, maybe you get done with, off of the last five years, kind of, they've never agreed to put the city based in blast can. I have one plan now, with City Robert, City Saint Robert, City Williamville. And this will belong to King, to the end of the road, to the twenty, to the city of Dixon. I can get all the other cities over here. All the equipment, whatever we need, frankly, if you guys didn't power back that over, whatever we need. That's what you have to go with, the cream of the worst of that. With this workforce, investment board, is going to create blast can in the atmosphere city. So I do need that everywhere. I have a city property that's over a house, a lurch, here, City Hall. Looking over, had her, 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 changed part of, um, and, um, sitting back over, just deciding there. She wants to go over there. Pretty simple, basically, the way you do this. Tells us if you need help, even, I mean, if they're back, we're not gonna worry.
When to start it, Dave?
Basically, she's going back, question, I saw that, she does, she said she had the one on the left, she's gonna start, um, four days, just, some equipment. She's gotta start hiring, and she goes, "I have all those people right up front." Because they do the drug testing, they do the background checking. So you're, the worker, you're gonna get past there.
Fantastic. And, Mr. Linker, are you gonna be our point of contact for this, or is there another person?
Actually, I'll go for both of these. And, and this is, um, really, this is, two people, I believe, this, this has the latest owner, or everything, you know, back there. If there's any other equipment you think, uh, your workers of the city, and something you know, another piece of equipment she wiped out, you let her, she'll, she'll bring it, and push it out.
Fantastic.
So they'll work with our city engineer, probably, they'll be...
Who, who, you've got a supervisor worker here, who is that?
Robert Olson, this is our...
That's who they have to go through?
John's our city engineer.
Whatever you do, wherever you go, put it, you should, well, it's a road, it's an air, or a leak, or whatever you're doing. Just let him fill it, he's an item, I'm not, I'm not, there's a paper, I just gotta do that. But, um, just keep following up with it.
How long is this program ready?
She's pushing it out for two thousand, only the September, two thousand seventeen, almost two years. I'm hopefully looking at this, if we, uh, a little bit, it's thirty, forty-five days, I have people hiring. Operators, they also went in, um, CDL operator, any license, I guess, for drunk, uh, all that.
Now, is FEMA off, like, for...
This is not me.
Oh, okay. Okay, then, you said something about this woman, or maybe this...
Well, it's part of the flood, it's working off the flood, two thousand, you said, is what they're working on.
Okay, well, then, the program organizer, let me put it that way. Now, because I'm a question, see, you have me held, that's not fair. Oh, I wonder what it was. When they hire the people that have the skills, like the CDL operators, are they gonna be compatible wages with what's out in the community and stuff? Or maybe better? So in other words, it would be, it would make it... It would make it an attractive item, is what I'm getting at. No, okay, so it would be an attractive item for some, what you want to hold.
The only law there, though, is, they're good for, I was wondering, because they can work, what, what city, of course, but, but, what's the matter is, it's only good for two, I think, yeah, two, two thousand eighty hours, so basically, a year. They have to land a green, new tractor back.
And should any citizens want to apply for this job, they need to contract, contact Ms. Blackwell, correct?
Our go through the second office, it's at the City Hall, there's, uh, workforce and investment board, it's at St. Robert City Hall, back there, the veterans, the veterans is right there, on some, this, 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 this. Because that's, that's where we're gonna be working out of, once this is started, but she's got sixteen cameras, she's got a sales attorney. It's only one camera, but, for, I'm like, really?
Do they have a certain length of time with these people, or can they work indefinitely, unless they do a good job?
They'll work for twenty thousand, maybe, hours in a year, and then what they'll do, we'll, 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 everything, and as long as they, as long as they keep getting money, uh, for two thousand, I can do that.
Will they, will they be insured? Or that's a benefit to the city?
That's up to, no, that's, everything's true then. If they're gonna give me a chance, then that, then workforce and investment board will let me owe them. It's about people they've worked out, and she doesn't have that, when she's all there, they have, they will, they'll have to be something.
Now, if we send people to the St. Robert office, what's the program they would ask for?
The jobs program.
Jobs program, that's all it's called, that's what it's called?
Zero jobs, zero jobs, it's called the jobs program.
Okay.
Zero disaster recovery, jobs program. They've attached this program to, to this disaster report. That's why it keeps me happy, throw it off, very, they, that's why it's not a part of FEMA. Well, this, we're all working together, but it's not...
That's kind of too expensive.
It's a part of that, I'm out.
Sounds very interesting, because we can utilize some of this, you know, some of this...
I drive all the roads around the county, and every city, and, 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 just try to keep, just lean, or, or rush that back, or, you know. That's a job, especially if they're separated right here, from each other. I know it's the state doing well, when you have these guys from all the way back, but, basically, it's the same thing, what we say.
We're getting ready to start an asphalt program, so these ditches really need to be taken care of.
Exactly, they're water, yes.
Thank you. That's, that's what I'm getting.
Mr. Linker, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, if you want to produce a call?
Okay.
If you can help, I can see a whole new, she's coming back, I'll let you see, some of the city, she's done with the worker, she's still working, and...
You, uh, never gave us the projected date.
That's what I'm saying, she's, the hiring, as soon as they can get the people hiring, at least you're buying, definitely the operator, the boot workers, and it's, um, she's been there with chainsaw, and my dad, and the hardest operator, and operator, correct? She's gonna start that, and she goes back. And she left the day, she said she never would refuse, she, her opinion, so, I'm taking it out, so, if she's here back.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. Next thing on the agenda, unfinished business, uh, we have... Uh, Mrs. Laura Buckets, please come up.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, uh, finish your name and address.
Laura, I'm going to address this one for the city of Florida. Uh, this is about to the, um, when I approached the city council about the warranty that I had in my basement, or sort of that in my basement. I just wanted to come and play a role, that I, that I talked with the city insurance company, and they, and I, um, due to the fact that, um, I'm not really sure, I guess, the city, um, could not foresee that this was an amendment that happened. So I'm coming back to the city to see if there is any other means, anything else that I can do at this point. I, I understand the situation had, now has been fixed, or maybe has been put on it, and eventually, it's on that point to happen again. But I just wanna come back to the city and see if there is any, you know, it's, uh...
Do you have a map of the two, uh, total damages, roughly sixteen, seven, or somewhere there?
Yes.
Let's hurry it over to councilor, if they have questions.
Well, you said that it was an unforeseeable circumstance, but the situation wasn't, did you, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but you said, um, that it wasn't corrected, that it could happen again? Is that what we're...
What I'm saying is, there, there, there's a mandate that's been put on the situation. So eventually, in, in the future, this could potentially happen, if somebody further up the line for me.
Oh, but not, not you?
Not necessarily me, I mean, it, it's occurred on this, in this, on that stretch, um, on East Country Club Road, it's occurred to three or four of my residents, four, I believe, four of my residents, that this has occurred to. So, and, and that's why I say a mandate has been put on it. I mean, it, it's, it's remedy for me, it's just not remedy for everyone else on that block.
Can I put the engineers in here, please? Can I put the engineers in here, please? John, would you like to lead them?
I, I think what you're saying is correct. We, we probably pared a third of the line, and a third, when it's necessary, we come off the main, probably about a hundred fifty foot, of all, quite how wide, where we need to install the, the plastic, uh, we have a hundred fifty foot, a little bit, a lot of things, you know, you have to cut down, uh, so, it's like, uh, an accident. No man known for the access points. It's, it's in the same shape it was before the city was there, and, 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 proper, with access, access, they're actually, they're actually, starting to, is my question.
Uh, unless, if I have this correct, uh, you're seeing, uh, the city, the version, for, and, you, uh, seeing now, for, the, 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 exit, uh, license?
John, is she, like, getting into the, the city of Dallas?
Yes.
Okay, so she, you're gonna qualify, I'm sorry.
The City of Dixon is a member of Plaski County Roadways. As such, we do need a representative for that. This is Carol Carson, had been our representative. She's very busy and has other obligations and need her attention at this time. So, the meeting starts on the third Wednesday of the month at nine o'clock down in Waynesville. We do need a representative, and I'm nominating Jesse Fleming, to attend those meetings and be your representative for the Plaski County Roadways. At this point, we would need either a motion to approve or a motion to disapprove by nomination of Jesse Fleming to attend, to be the representative for Plaski County Roadways.
I'll make a motion for Jesse Fleming's to be the representative.
We have a motion by Councilman Tilges to approve Jesse Fleming's nomination to be Plaski County Roadways, to be elected. Seconded by Councilman Timmons. We will conduct a roll call vote.
Marilyn Timmons.
Yes.
Betty Shults, not Betty Shults.
Yes.
All right, Betty Tilges.
Yes.
Lynn Witten. Matthew York. Paul Watson.
Yes.
Danny Shults.
Yes.
Andrew R. Bass. Sorry. Congratulations, Mr. Fleming.
You did a lot of inspection progress.
What's that?
Yes, you realized the inspection progress. Congrats, brother.
See, you guys got it all set up. We need to make sure.
We've got very little to discuss here.
Next up, the next item on the agenda is new business licenses. We do have a lot of them. I'm going to read these off, and then we will vote on them individually. A&amp;A Incorporated, JDMC Engineering, which is John. Deal Leasing LLC, Reese Construction, Roman Concrete and Construction LLC, Automated Business Systems Incorporated. That's all.
What is that, A&amp;A Incorporated?
What's that?
A&amp;A. What does that stand for?
Sure, I'm not sure. Sure as I don't have any scripts down below, but like, please.
Satisfied business?
Yes, service.
Good business?
No, just a free business.
Do you need a separate motion against me?
We will have to vote on it individually. As it stands right now, our city ordinance says that each new business license has to be reviewed.
I'll make a motion for A&amp;A Incorporated.
Which one, A&amp;A?
A&amp;A.
We have a motion to approve A&amp;A for their business license. Councilman Tilges, seconded by Councilman Witten. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, this passes by zero. Please pass it back. Next business that we have is Automated Business Systems Incorporated. We have a motion to approve Automated Business Systems Incorporated. We have seconded. Seconded by Councilman Timmons. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, this passes by zero. JDMC Engineering LLC.
I'll make a motion for JDMC.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tilges. We have a second by Councilman Watson to approve JDMC Engineering LLC. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, this passes by zero. Roman Concrete Construction LLC. We have a motion from Councilman Schultz, seconded by Councilman Witten to approve Roman Concrete and Construction LLC. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any votes, this passes by zero. Next one, is Reese Construction.
I'll make a motion for Reese Construction.
We have a motion from Councilman Tilges, seconded by Councilman Watson to approve Reese Construction. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, this passes by zero. Deal Leasing LLC. Deal Leasing LLC. We have a motion from Councilman Schultz to approve Deal Leasing LLC. We have a second. Seconded by Councilman Witten. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, this passes by zero. That concludes that part of it. Next thing I'd like to bring up, is the bill that we have discussed. Couple of you have expressed interest about amended the ordinance. Amendment to ordinance number 536, to go to one meeting a month. I was going to open this up for discussion, I think I have a grab. If you want to, you guys can look at it.
If we cannot get everything done in one meeting, you could always call a special meeting.
Yeah, they'll ask, they'll ask the mayor and the mayor pro temp to call special meetings. All the dues will go through. We'll do two minutes, workouts number. If you have questions, comments, concerns. Jesse, keep talking. Start with this, Tilges.
Do you have another question?
Okay. Do you have any other questions at this point? What's, what's that? Yeah, you can give back the time. Yeah, if we don't have any questions, then we can. There are no questions to write anything. Mr. Watson? Mr. Watson, do you have any questions, comments, concerns, all those?
I'll make a question. Maybe I should say, mayor, who did, did he have an issue?
In the language of this, yes. The special meetings of the Board of Alderman, they'd be called by the mayor or president of the board, which is the mayor pro temp.
My other question, the situation that it's right now, do you think it's feasible for us to hold one meeting a month?
The.
And still, starting with people that watched first, and then he said it all about. Each one of them made the first.
We could put, uh.
That's just a question.
Put a effective date on it. However, we can call special meetings should we have other business outside of the normal city business that we have to attend to. As we're currently doing. Those special items, we will still have to meet all those particular items. But the regular day-to-day businesses, city hours, we. Potentially, we can take care of it in one meeting. However, if we are not able to, that's why I was the conversation we had as a.
My idea is, let us do this, try to do it in some more, in a little.
Yeah. Okay, at this point, I'm going to close discussion. If we go any farther with this, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion. One, zero, three, three, seven, zero. Drive correct, ordinance number five thirty-six.
Okay, we have a motion. We'll have to do two readings of this. Then we have a second.
I'll second it.
That's for the same time. Maryland is seconded. All those in favor, please raise your hand. I will read this, uh, twice. I'll read this once. We'll need a motion to read it for the second time. And then when the roll call. It says, an ordinance to revise section one-ten, point-one-seven-zero, and number five-thirty-six of Code of Laws of the City of Dixon, Missouri, and acting in lieu thereof, one new section of the Code of Laws of the City of Dixon, Missouri, to be known as section one-one-zero, point-one-one-seven, one-seven-zero, relating to meetings of the Board of Alderman, fixing the effective date hereup. The other thing by the Board of Alderman of the City of Dixon, Missouri, is follows. Section one, section one-one, zero, point-one-seven-zero, Code of Laws of the City of Dixon, Missouri, relating to meetings of the Board of Alderman, Alderman is hereby repealed. A new section relating to the same subject that are being enacted in lieu thereof to read as follows. Section one-one-zero, point-one-seven-zero meetings. Regular meetings of the Board of Alderman shall be called on the first Monday of each month, at the city hall for location determined by the mayor at the hour of six P.M. On such days, or at times as adjourned to. Special meetings of the Board of Alderman shall be called by the mayor, the president of the board. Section two, the official agenda for the meetings shall be posted at city hall. At least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, the agenda items will be approved by the mayor through clerk's office. Persons wanting to be on the agenda will file in writing to the certain city clerk's office. The form must be complete or be deemed insufficient for acceptance. Audience members will be expected to refrain from disturbing the councilroom session such as, so, such as. The mayor may correct the police or remove that person from the meeting unless. Additionally, audience members will not participate in discussion unless they are based on the agenda. That is completely, at this point, we need a motion for a second read.
I'll make a motion to redo the second reading. And we'll have a session.
We have a motion for a second read. For Councilman Schultz, you have a second. Seconded by Councilman Witten. For a second read of the reading, the caption only. It says to revise ordinance section one-one-zero, point-one-seven-o, and number five-thirty-six of the Code of Laws of the City of Dixon, Missouri, and acting in lieu thereof, one new section of the Code of Laws of the City of Dixon, Missouri, to be known as section one-one-zero, point-one-seven-o, relating to the meeting of the Board of Alderman, and fixing the effective date hereup. At this point, we need a roll call vote.
Marilyn Timmons.
Yes.
Betty Tilges.
Yes.
Lynn Witten.
Yes.
Matthew York. Paul Watson.
Yes.
Danny Shults.
Yes.
That was a good question.
Okay, next item is bill number two, two sixteen, National Zero Two, on for Schultz. This relates to new legislation, uh, referencing impeachment and ability for somebody to hold office. Councilman Schultz, I'll let you, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Um, I was, uh, placed on a committee to do some research on the impeachment ordinance, including any revisions or amendments or any sort of.
Can I carry it?
Oh. All right, I was put on a committee, and, um, on that committee, I was asked to research and review the existing ordinance that we have on impeachment on the books. What I've come up with, with the help of a community member, is an achievement not to be mentioned at this time, is, uh, the ordinance that the mayor has in hand. I presented it to legal counsel, legal counsel review it, and whatever revisions he's made is what the mayor's going to do.
At this point, we do have an ordinance here, ordinance proposal. We'll do the motion to read, or we'll need a motion for this, uh, to read it.
I'll make a motion to redo the ordinance for impeachment.
Do we have a second? This ordinance states. Excuse me. Uh, do they copy this? At this point, let's continue on the vote as far as, we'll, we'll hold the vote until everybody gets a chance to read that. At this point, uh, what I would like to do is put the council on recess for ten minutes. This will be the council to read this. Time is seven fifty-seven P.M. We will be, uh, in recess until eight ten. I am stopping these recordings. As the council.
You got to stick there. You're trying to stick there.
This is the city council is back in session after recess. We did have a motion from Councilman Schultz, seconded by Councilman Witten, to read this ordinance. Uh, all of the council members have an opportunity to read this. So I will go ahead, actually, at this point, we need a vote to read it or not read it. We are on the, uh, bill two thousand sixteen, that's zero, two, which is admitting ordinances that have a new section for elected officials who are moved out of the city. May not thereafter hold elected office. In the, in the City of Dixon. Do you want to retract?
All right, I'll make a motion if we read the ordinance for impeachment.
We have a motion to read the ordinance. We have a second. Seconded by Mr. Witten. I'll read this in its entirety, and then we'll be back.
Can I say something as we go through? In reference to, came about the information.
Uh, this is an ordinance admitting the City of Dixon Code of Ordinances by adding a new section, section one-zero-five, one-zero-two-five, the City of Dixon, Missouri City Code of Ordinances, providing that those elected officials who are removed from office by impeachment may not thereafter hold any elected office with the City of Dixon, Missouri. Whereas the city council, the City of Dixon wishes to ensure that each elected official do not regain an elected office after impeachment from any elected office. Now therefore, in order to, by the Board of Alderman, City of Dixon, Missouri, as follows, that the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dixon, Missouri is hereby amended by adding a section numbered one-zero-five, point-two-five, which reads as follows, any elected officer who is impeached from any office shall not thereafter at any time be eligible to hold, regain, or serve in any elected office or office of trust for the City of Dixon. That is the bill. At this point, we will need a motion for a second read.
I'll make a motion to do a second.
We have a motion for a second read, we have a second. We have a second by, uh, Councilman Witten. All those in favor, raise your hand for the second read. Opposed? Second read, all those, we read the caption only. This says, an ordinance amending the Dixon Code of Ordinances by adding a new section, one-zero-five, one-zero-two-five of the Dixon, Missouri City Code of Ordinances, providing that those elected officials be removed from office by impeachment may not thereafter hold any elected office for the City of Dixon, Missouri. At this point, we need.
Now, can I say something about?
At this point, we need a motion to vote.
I'll make a motion if we vote on the vote for impeachment.
We have a motion to, uh, vote on this bill. This will be a roll call vote. The motion was made by Councilman Schultz, we have a second. Seconded by Councilman Witten. This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Fleming.
Marilyn Timmons.
By the same ordinance, we have to add, if the person is present, they may not abstain from reading.
No? Betty Tilges?
No.
Lynn Witten?
Yes.
Paul Watson?
No.
Danny Shults?
Yes.
It does not pass, uh, three to, three to two.
Bill number two, for the record, is bill number two, zero, six, two, zero, one, six, dash, zero, zero, two. Does not pass. At this point, uh, next thing on the agenda is city engineer, Congressman Gold, come on over. the whole town.
He can't.
I would like to get out the five, four steps, the city of Dixon is taking this month, all five passed, okay? We are bringing a sample for the new water run, connect the, uh, water run on South Street, South Road. Connect the, we can do that on, uh, a second.
Can I say anything to them? Is the same.
We will have, uh, give some week to get everybody connected to the two. Once the sample comes back, anytime, um, we need for two. For sure, for sure, most of the problems. One still question, will we go forward?
Uh, John and I will be meeting with, uh, the contract winners, uh, Willard Asphalt on February the fifteenth, uh, to specifically discuss the plan of action for the roads. In my talking with Brennan, uh, the project manager. Bobby?
I'm sorry.
No, go, go on, uh, uh, February the fifteenth, we're gonna be, we're gonna be meeting with Brennan Willard of Willard Asphalt. Willard Asphalt did win the bid. We're gonna set the order of precedent on the streets as far as which ones are gonna tackle first. And by and large, we're gonna utilize John's expertise in that as well as Mr. Willard's,
With that being said, on Broadway, Mr. Newker being in our meeting today, the city, we may try to, depending on the time of this program, and just accept the appointment to the council, we may try to, uh, get these guys in there as soon as possible. Hopefully we can get these guys in here in the next month or so to give them a jump start, um, on maybe aggressive ditches in front of the asphalt. This program comes to fruition in time. I don't want it to delay the project, but again, if these workers that we spoke about are able to jump in front of a paving crew, to work on the project, to approach the office to install the covers, we may see what we might do to do that. So the timing of the meeting with Willard will work out perfectly with the news that we have received.
That's provided if it proves.
Correct, if, if their timing works out. I know we're way old, but everybody can utilize it if they know that we have no issues.
But in the meantime, we need to do something about the ditches. We can't sit and wait for this to happen.
No.
We need to, we need to live on these ditches and it's gonna be pointless to do the roads, I mean seriously.
And that was one of the topics that, uh, John and I met with Mr. Portman today on getting a plan of action to tackle those ditch lines, uh, with the firm manager that he has. John recently did some work over on, about high school. I want to say that's the very south part of Pearl Street.
Correct.
Um, how did that, correct? Uh, just, just excuse me.
Yeah.
Uh, what, what did he actually do?
Installed a, we replaced a four inch water main, main joint, we got the water installed, three fire outlets, and that's the way that we're getting the tests so we can connect those two to the water. Uh, two thousand feet of water being installed in that area.
And with that, all of the homeowners in that area should see it increased water pressure.
Increased capacity. We're working right now to give them updated mapping of the, uh, water bridges in the way, we're addressing the, uh, fire items, the location, the new fire items that we installed, the three fires isolated for the city, which I would remember for the city.
Uh, John, uh, very briefly, uh, you and I discussed the wastewater treatment facility. We just spent some money on some parks.
Yes. It's been probably two weeks ago, three weeks ago, we worked the parts for the, some of the parks for the wastewater treatment plant. The treatment plant is going to be a phase project. Currently the plant is, uh, is pretty rushed. Concern is that the plant will go down prior during or somewhere in the construction of the main improvements. So in order to keep the plant running, we're gonna do these preliminary things that are in the master plan, we're not changing designs here, we're gonna do the same thing that we did all at once for basically the pieces that we put in here to ensure that the plant runs, you know, at greater efficiency and is able to stand alone under its, under its own, uh, you know, container, to keep, keep the pesto quality high during the construction and then the major parts, which will be your, uh, a new fortified, uh, ultraviolet light and harsh increase for the animals. So these, uh, let me say it again, two hundred thousand?
Correct. It was, uh, two hundred thousand. And what, uh, one of the things John and I have discussed in roughly ten years, uh, by doing the actions, uh, we're doing right now, we're gonna see a reduction in the utility bill. At the water treatment facility. So it's gonna, you spent two hundred thousand dollars, but it's gonna, it's going to pay off, uh, because I don't have the utility bill for the, uh, specifically for the wastewater treatment facility, but this is going to lower it.
You should see a twenty, thirty percent decrease in the utility at the plant. So that's, that's encouraging.
So you figure probably in about ten years, we can revamp total cost?
You, you would recover your costs as well, uh, definitely your increased costs within five years. The difference between the, um, the robbers and the defusers, what was neighborhood thirty, thirty-five thousand.
Has Dan heard anything about the, the, uh, plant project as far as approvals?
No.
What do you anticipate with that?
Um, I don't anticipate any issues occurring.
What do you think about, I mean, considering they understand the dysfunction of this plant?
Right.
They might wanna expedite.
Our increased, uh, efficiency at the plant is gonna increase the load to the plant. It should reduce the amount of, um, high house, okay? So we're not gonna be able to double those to the plant, we should, the amount of those that I can see, we should obviously reduce the discharge from alcohol too.
City council, have any questions of this role?
Willard, do you have a station area? Uh, or major project? We are going to establish those, uh, needs and requirements differently, um, with the city crew moving out of the shed on Elster. I think we could also add, it's still a gated locked, uh, area, I think they can utilize that during the time of, you know, construction. We will address that though. That's a question I have for him is, is what needs he would have during, during the payment of the project, you know, the street project and see if we can accommodate, if he would at least speak in advance, you know, if he has a larger shade area, maybe supply that project and his shed. Yeah, I think, I mean, other members, you guys are ready to definitely say, you know, I think this is the first time.
Tell encourage, any, any council member that wants to attend that meeting, uh, going in our office, I believe it's ten A M. All right, fifteen, ten A M on the fifteenth, so you can customize your schedules. John, thank you.
Four times, ten A M?
Ten A M. Next thing we have is the, uh, police report, uh, we have annual police report, that's what we give on the, as well as this regular police report. Well, I can do one video, Heather will start with the annual police report.
I passed out a packet of everyone prepared to meet. The first page is the municipal report, um, I don't know what it is, but she has me to attach it. Page two is the, uh, two thousand fifteen annual traffic safety report, uh, pursuant to city code group five out of five oh, it requires the city marshal to report annual of traffic accidents. Basically what this breakdown is, is we have forty-eight motor vehicle accidents in the city of Dixon within the city limits in two thousand fifteen. Uh, we also assisted outside agencies more times. Now this does not include, um, the things that didn't meet the criteria of definition of accident, i.e. the murder arrests usually we conduct there, uh, during a disaster, just like you. We had no individual guilt. We had four injured, two made motor arrests off of traffic accidents, and we issued eleven citations. Now down at the bottom, I may note that since October fifteenth, we've had, at the time of the time of this, we'd only had three motor vehicle accidents in the last hundred twenty days. Uh, that number is not six, uh, still not a very large number, and I really think that's contributed to a proact of more of some tragedies that we've been through.
Now lieutenant, with, on far, uh, with this, this looks like it's gonna significantly decrease the motor vehicle accidents that were there in the city. Two thousand sixteen's was a whole lot better than two thousand fifteen did.
Absolutely.
It was a thousand, uh, seventy percent. Did I have to do the math? That's definitely, uh, projected throughout here, we can take this hundred twenty days and move forward.
Well, if we say on far, I mean, this is true to larger property damage, um, let's say it's looking at the license on property damage, high house, not to mention another major. Um, so that is one of our strategies in reducing our motor vehicle accidents in the city of Dixon.
Speaking of accidents, we had one over there on the third and twenty-eighth by the dollar store.
Yes, ma'am.
He was responsible for the vehicle debris that's laying in the ditch.
Ultimately, technically, it took.
Who was the time?
Uh, I do not know who worked that, I noticed the debris at the end of that. That's not a contract, uh, and I will say, Francis, Mr. Davidson's back here, he's never done that, uh, so I don't know, if it's one of the new business, I don't know, I'd have to do some research to find out who totally did it.
Would you please?
Uh, your regular, is that all your annual, annual report?
For the annual.
Okay, go ahead and go onto your weekly report.
Um, well, the weekly is technically not a weekly since we didn't have any.
Sure.
Uh, so this, this encompasses the last twenty-seven days. We've had a very busy period, we've conducted day before traffic stops, we've issued fifty-six citations, issued forty-four appointments. We've had ten, ten drug cases in the last twenty-seven days.
Ten, ten drug cases in twenty-seven days.
Perfect. And that raises from marijuana to comparable. And I have my idea of a compound, look, I have ten temporary evidence boxes that are chugged full of the last month's work. I mean, we got to, we're gonna take pause, go to the ground, I'll just say that. It's, it's getting, the word is out that we are, we're still running into problem areas. Um, we've assisted, I don't know if everybody was aware, I mean, I noticed on social media, we've assisted with two major manholes in the last two weeks, um, one from Harris County and one from right here in Blassey County. Um, both subjects were caught in our area, um, we paid a little visit to them after we received some information, kicked in an org and found our subject along with Samara, uh, Six Little Neals, et cetera, et cetera. So that, that turned out very well. We have a major pursuit, just a week ago, started out a case in Gemma Sword. We went all the way into various county of D D and Chase Highway, totaled a vehicle, interfranchised, uh, also recovering a significantly knockout. We've worked one sexual assault in high school, I'm not gonna go into any details on that, it's under investigation. One thing I do wanna talk about, and I think the businesses and citizens of Dixon need to know about, I've been putting together a seminar that I'm going to be doing hopefully in March on elder abuse scams in the building. While I was putting together, doing some research, we had two reports in the same day of counterfeiting money, servicing at two businesses. I don't think that's a coincidence, I mean, it, it, people are smart, I mean, technology is perfect, but I just think citizens and the businesses need to be aware that it is out here and it's moving. The, one thing that I am not proud of, uh, we also, yes, we had ten drug arrests or cases in the last twenty-seven days, we've also had ten domestic or disturbances. And that is something that we're actively, a strategy we've commented, because we, we got, it's the time of year, people pin up, stir crazy, uh, but we are noticing an increase in domestic violence. So we're, uh, well, that'll be one thing really, really interesting.
And, uh, one of the things that I will say with that, uh, when we talk, uh, when you and I talk about that, uh, we are gonna be providing, um, uh, numbers and resources to anybody that's a victim of domestic violence, um, as far as a safe house or a safe place that they can go to. Well, uh, that will be important to be, to be.
Uh, one thing I'd like to add is, uh, we are going to be participating in a county line, uh, John's name, station. But we're, basically what it is, is we're gonna be participating on the twenty-seventh of February, doing the county line count of homeless individuals. We're very good at doing some research in our local community.
Census Bureau?
Uh, it's not Census Bureau, it's a, it's an organization, similar to what Mr. Newker was throwing out, it's, uh, there's organizations that assist in giving it off in the street this end of it. We're gonna have a meeting for further details, uh, to say, uh, the big, uh, that can, that would be briefly explained, you know, what you do and what's gonna happen, and we're participating in that. Likely only one homeless individual that I knew of, uh, was currently incarcerated in our judge, uh, but that's still countervestors fact, uh, is a different shelter, slash shelter reasons for homelessness, um, that we, city basically, we're participating in that.
Thank you.
When would you send the domestic violence cases from March one?
Uh, now I have put together a thing this time, I plan on doing something in March on elder abuse scams.
The lieutenant and I will be going over a building plan to deter domestic violence, with that plan, uh, we're also gonna have resources, we have a little city hall, should somebody need to, uh, escape that situation, they have the resources and, and that'll, that'll. They have the resources and that'll, that'll be happening.
One thing I have changed on that is mandatory reporting. Before, if an officer, if there was no sign of physical violence, and the officer could handle the situation on his own and separate the court, you know, quiet the situation, you know, he was just sending that. What I've had is created forums and reports, and I've required every domestic violence situation to be reported, mandatory by the officers, whether it's physical or, now that doesn't, that doesn't mean that that every domestic violence someone can be charged. Missouri state law says physical violence must result in any sign of physical violence. Verbal is different, but it's still domestic violence and a fellow is necessary to report
Lieutenant, thank you for a very thorough report. At this point, we've reached the end of our agenda, agenda for open session. We will be going into closed session. We will revise the statute six, ten, point zero two one, point nine subsection one, criminal communication between the counties. Need motion for amendment, going to be closed session. You have a motion for amendment? Not open session, go to closed session. Regular vote, keep all those approved. This will be a roll call vote. Mayor Difmons? Mary Childress? Ms. Whitten?
Yes.
Paul Watson? Diane Sholz? Eight forty-two. Dan? At this point, the Dixon City Council does stay in recess for the next ten minutes. Who's a brief meeting at eight fifty in closed session, as per the Missouri statute.